Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Public Building Design Committee. And I hope I got that name properly done.
It's different every time.
Close enough, okay. For purposes of tonight's meeting, I'm going to ask that Chris Mitchell actually call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. He is the elected clerk of the board, and I won't get into too much discussion of that tonight. We'll have further discussion at the Board of Selectmen's meeting next week. But Chris, if you would, please.
Okay. Good evening. Tuesday, May 19th, I'd like to call this meeting the joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Permanent Municipal Building Committee open.
Mr. Chairman, who you are?
Yeah, the basic reason for tonight's meeting, as you know, we're on a timeframe here to try to get to a fall town meeting with final bids on the plans that have been developed. In order to do that, obviously, we have to get in front of a number of town boards. And so, as we showed you last time, kind of where we had morphed the program to, which I think is pretty, was pretty solid at the time, as far as the inside of the building. The secondary side of that is obviously the exterior of the building, and how does that all come together and does it meet the needs of the town from a look perspective as well? So, what we're asking tonight basically is to take a look at the designs that are out there. There still are probably a few questions that need to be kind of resolved as a group here. The more of the fine points at this point, I think we've made a number of revisions over the last few weeks here to try to get it closer and closer to, you know, the colonial design in which we think the town will be happy with the final product. And so, you know, again, if we can kind of get this as neat a package tonight as possible, it then goes in front of the Review Committee tomorrow night for, you know, Building Review Committee from the town side, and then next week it would go in front of the Site Plan Review. So as you can see, we're marching down a program here. Major reason for doing that is we want to get by the end of May, we'd like to be to complete its specifications so that we can actually get our first estimate on the cost of the building as it's designed today with the program as it's designed, and then move forward into actual construction documents. So again, we can get to a bidding process by the end of the summer and then get into a town meeting in the late fall. So, that's kind of the plan, but again, it takes everybody moving the steps forward on a regular basis here. So, basically, Drayton and Julie are here from LLB, and they can give the presentation as to what the current design is and where some of the current questions are, and just make sure that we all are in agreement with the, you know, the direction that this has gone to.
Thank you, Bill. Drayton?
Thank you very much. I'm Drayton Fair from LLB. Let's put this over here.
Okay.
And as Bill mentioned, I've got Julie Jansowitz with me tonight, a colleague of LLB. And we're here to give you a little bit of an update on the project. We've met a number of times with the committee, as you know. We had a fairly long programming session with the town, met with all of the staff. We've really gone over the plan a number of times. I think that the plan is actually a very, a very clear and very tight plan. Every space was reviewed with the staff, and frankly, there's no real extra space in this plan. It hasn't changed really significantly since, for a little while, we've been working a little bit on the exterior. But just very quickly, I'll walk you through it. On the first floor, the main entrance to the building will be in the center of the building with a lobby. The Selectmen's Meeting Room will be directly off the lobby, elevator off the lobby, toilets off the lobby. That space, the lobby, the toilets, and the Selectmen's Meeting Room will be able to be used after hours after the building is closed with a security point right here. Coming straight into the building, the Finance Department is directly to your left. It's one of the largest departments in the, in the Town Hall. Town Clerk will be to your right. Veteran Services will be in this corner. There'll be a flexible meeting room that's available to be used by all the departments as well as the public on the first floor. Coming upstairs by either the elevator or the stairway in front and the egress stair here, the second floor is laid out in a very similar fashion. Planning and Conservation, inspections, a Plan Review Room, which is also a flexible meeting space for all of the departments, Health Services and Town Administration in the upper right corner. The Selectmen's Meeting Room is really only one story tall. The rest of the building is two stories. The site plan, which I think most people have seen as well, we've been working out with Bay Colony as well as our Landscape Architect, Landscape Elements. We've managed about 71 parking spaces on-site. As you know, the site slopes up towards the back, but we've been able to manage the grades so that we won't require any kind of retaining wall down at the, down at the South Street side. We've really preserved the existing front lawn of the original Town Hall as it is, keeping the trees intact, and start the parking from basically the existing Town Hall up. And it gently slopes up. Coming up either Liberty Place or off Liberty Street, the parking lot has aisles which face the entry for safety. There's a parking cell over here to the northeast, which is mainly for staff. Liberty Place, we've got some parallel parking spaces, about five parallel parking spaces here, and in total, four handicap parking spaces. Two in front of the building, one over in the staff area, and then one over by the Payne School because that is handicap accessible, and we wanted to make sure that the opportunity was there for someone to be able to visit the Payne School. We've, we're working on photometrics for lighting parking lot. The lights that we've chosen, I don't think we have a cut with us tonight, but they're lantern-type, very sort of colonial in nature. We'll have a photometric to submit to the planning, planning board. Worked out a series of landscape trees that border the parking lot, but also leave enough room for snow plows. There are no islands in the parking lot, again, to avoid any issues with snow plowing. Now, down at the corner of South Street and Liberty Street, we've provided a small plaza which, which connects the existing crosswalks and a small landscaped path which leads from that corner into the parking lot. So there's a pedestrian access from the intersection here. There's also crosswalks from, across Liberty Street and across the parking lot here. We've met with the neighbors and gotten some feedback from them. The back of the parcel is basically got a fence, I think we're at a-
Seven foot.
-seven-foot-high fence, we agreed on, as well as a row of arbivides that'll fill in.
Just for clarification, there's a seven-foot fence existing. We will put an A-quit fence in for the construction side, again, to give a little bit better buffer and to get some of the trees to help with this.
Now, we met with the committee a couple of weeks ago, and we refined, from some of those comments, we refined some of the look of the building. And we've just developed that from the, from the, from the concepts that were on display at the town meeting. So, we've got a couple of ideas, but this is really the basis of what we're looking at for Town Hall. A very symmetrical facade with a pediment and columns which really announce the entry in the center. The Selectmen's Meeting Room is to the side and has large windows. Again, we've always wanted to sort of relay the concept of transparent government and welcoming citizens into the Selectmen's Meetings. So we've kept the windows in the Selectmen's Meeting Room large. The main building itself is really sort of a two-story symmetrical block. The Selectmen's Meeting Room acts as a, as a pavilion, almost a conservatory to that, to that space. Now, the, the main entrance certainly announces the building as Town Hall. We put the town seal in the middle of the pediment. The major materials would be brick and probably a fiberglass urethane or composite material for the trim, so it'd be low maintenance. Aluminum-clad wood windows for double-hung windows throughout. The rear of the building, where the office wing is, we're looking, again, in a composite material, really trying to play that down as sort of almost an addition to the main block of the building, but also trying to save a little bit in terms of, in terms of materials. One idea that we've got here is that the, that major center block we're showing, we'd like to see hopefully some stone on that. It hearkens back to some of the stone in town on Memorial Hall, similar to some of the stone that, that we used at the library. But the idea of, of this block, you know, announcing itself prominently and strongly as a, as a, as a stone piece, we think is, is important. We have a cupola on top. One of the things that, that we tried to do with this particular cupola is we put it on top of the lobby space so that it's actually a functioning lantern. So it has glass in it, and hopefully, when you, when you look up in the lobby space, you'll be able to see, see the cupola, and, and the light can come in from the cupola in the lobby space. So, we have looked at it on the back of the building, sort of on the center of the building, but it really doesn't have the same impact because it, you wouldn't see it from the inside. So these are, these are two views of what it looks like from South Street as well as what it will look like as coming in from Liberty, Liberty Street. We did, again, we've looked at a number of different, we've looked at a, a couple of different materials as well. This is our, of course, our preferred scheme. We have looked at continuing the brick on the facade. We've looked at round columns versus the square columns. We've looked at a more limestone-like material, maybe engineered stone like Eris Craft in more of a buff color. Here, we show that, the cupola on the back portion of the building. But again, that's, that's not our preferred location just because we'd like for it to really be a functioning, functioning piece. It also raises the, the height of the building a little bit. Cupolas are exempt from the zoning. We're at about 39 foot eight inches to the peak of the building. The zoning is at 40 feet. I think this brings it up to almost 52 feet. And on the, on this design concept B, we also looked at some arched windows for that Selectmen's Meeting Room. But again, our preferred scheme, of course, is, is, is this one with, with the stone. So that's where we are, and we're looking for your feedback. As Mr. Yopna said, we are planning on going to the Planning Board approval next week, the Design Review Board tomorrow, and hopefully, we're going to go forward with a cost estimate to get some very hard costs on this so that we can take the next step and proceed further.
And leaving those up there for a minute the way they are, I did take the time to have Jack Othlet come into my office, and obviously, I didn't have these finalized designs done, but I had our last version, which isn't significantly different, and reviewed the different issues with him. And unfortunately, Jack couldn't be here tonight, but he wanted me to kind of relay his thoughts on, on some of this. And I think as most of us respect Jack's opinion in the way the, the town, you know, historically has been built, I was really kind of pleased to kind of walk him through this. His basic concept, you know, on the front of the building is he did like actually a breakup of the front entranceway from a material point of view. He saw it with the brick. He saw it, you know, with a, actually, at the time, it was just a gray stone type of material. But again, the issue really for him was that, to focus on the center of the building and that real colonial look. He thought that did that. As far as the, the look of the roof over the Selectmen's, he felt, again, we talked at one point, because it was brought up in a number of, of the different meetings, with how the, the pediment above the, the window line or above the brick would actually be built. Would it look more of a fence-type, you know, style, or would it be a solid? And again, I think the theory was not to try to draw the eye to the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Hall, but to draw the eye to the front door. So the more ornate you made that, you know, setup above that roofline, the more your eye was going to be drawn to it as you looked at the building. So, you know, he kind of thought that the, the molding setups that we were showing actually did a better job of keeping you looking, you know, directly at the front entranceway. The cupola, he loved the fact that it was functional, I think. He, he thought the one that sat on the building side of it. Now, my personal perspective on that, which I really originally didn't like, but the more I thought about it, it also serves a secondary purpose, and it probably shows better in the one right next to Drayton. And that is, if we go to a theory, which I think most people want, which that would be a lit cupola for the nights, at least until we shut down the building time-wise, if it sits on the back part of the building, then effectively, it's going to be brighter and more into the neighbor's sight. If it sits on the front, it's going to get muted as far as the amount of light that's pushed backwards, and it also, you know, does have a functional capability. So, I want you, when you think about those, those are kind of the things that I, you know, again, I wasn't thinking about originally, but the more I looked at, the more I started to realize that there are some big advantages to moving it forward on the site. And the, you know, other than that, he thought, you know, he was actually very impressed. I took him from the very beginning of the process. I really took him through all the different designs we'd looked at in the floor plan layouts. I took him, how we had narrowed it down finally to where we were. He liked the flow of the inside of the building. He thought that, that it looked like a very efficient, you know, flow to himself. He thought it was very functional for the staff that was going to work. So I think overall, his impression was very high on, on what we've gotten to at this point, and he did realize we were down to some of the finite points, window treatments, block walls, you know, cupola location type of thing. But he really did feel that this building felt, you know, would fit into the town's, you know, heritage and really would be something that the town could be proud of. So I was, I was very pleased to be able to come out of that meeting with that from him. Again, you know, not knowing where he would come from, what, you know, what he would like or wouldn't like in this, in this process. So, so I think with that said, I mean, again, there's, there's a half a dozen issues here, I think, at this point, unless you really just don't even like the, the overall design. But we really are down to some, some simple things like, you know, the window treatments in the Board of Selectmen's. You know, the palladium-style window, while it looks nice and is grand, is harder to, you know, to filter the light out of, but there will be day meetings, so cable TV has already kind of weighed in on that, the fact that they want to be able to make sure that the room can be darkened so that if they're filming during any given thing in the daytime, that they have the control. You can buy them. They're more expensive, obviously, for a palladium window than they are for a square window. You also, you know, if you, if you feel it draws your eye too much to that versus a square one, or if you don't think it looks as colonial, I mean, it can go either way. So, but to be honest with you, I think everything that we're out here, and I don't, you know, want to speak for my whole committee on this, I think we're at a point now where we're so comfortable with the overall concept of the design, the choices you have in making some of the pinpoints here, we could live either way. I don't think it's going to really make a difference to us one way or the other. I think we've, we've done, we hope you've asked us to do. So, we're really looking for your input at this point.
There are some fine points to the design that, that may be hard to see from, from there. We are, we have shown some brick coining on the corners, so that there's a little detail to the corner. The, and of course, we're working on the, the final details of the trim, and that, and that will get developed as the project goes forward in terms of the, the exact height of the trim. We're showing some cast stone or granite sills on the windows and at the headers on the first floor. The windows on the upper level are just slightly smaller than the windows on the lower level. The, the entablature and cornice piece around the, around the building is nice and, and large, so it gives the building a really nice sort of proportion and hat. We worked pretty hard on the proportion of the, of the front. I think, I think Mr. Jefferson and Mr. Palladio would be pleased. So, there are, as I said, there are some details that, that we've been working out that, again, might be hard to see from, from, from your seats.
Board members, any thoughts, reactions?
Yeah, I, I think you're, from my perspective, you're, you're almost there. I like the fact that you're using a different material in a front entry way because now it's, it's telling folks, yeah, there's columns, but this is, this is the main entrance. My only comment would be to try and reduce the massing on the trim on the Selectmen's appendage. I think it's still, I think it's, it's still too much. I think less is more there because we really want that just to kind of blend in with the building and keep your eye focused on the main entry. Like, like Bill said, the, the square windows, I think, kind of ties that, that Selectmen's room more into the rest of the building. I don't think we want to call that out as a, as a separate entity, so to speak. The building's linear, so I think sticking with, with linear columns, I think, is, is the, the right tact.
Uh huh.
And I, I think, I think you're pretty close.
What, to Dave's point, what is the thickness of the, I mean, I know, one of the issues in your, you're probably right, you can see the color in it, but one of the issues is obviously we're trying to pitch the roof, too.
Right.
Do we, how much room do we have in which to be able to downplay those, do you think, and still keep a decent pitch on the Selectmen's Meeting?
I, I think we've got, we've got quite a pitch on that. We planned on scuppers and, and downsputts, but within this roof structure, we've got probably at least a foot, a foot and a half to slope from one side to the other. So, we don't have any concerns about, about slope at all.
Yeah, 'cause I, I'm just concerned that the massing's going to take away from those second-floor windows.
Uh huh.
I think, I think you're spot on with the cupola.
Okay. Jenny, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I love the cupola idea where it's-
I don't know where we got it from, but-
No, 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 I mean, with the placement of it. My original thought would be on, on the main roof. But the idea of it having it over the, the entranceway lit, I think that would really, really look very ni, very nice in the daytime and, and the evening. Could you please explain the, the different color stone and what material you'd be using at the front entrance?
Sure.
The rendering makes sure.
Yeah. I think the, here, we've, we've looked at a number of different materials. We are going for cost estimates, of course, but what our suggestion is, is, is more of a fieldstone type, type stone for that front entrance. It relates, again, to Memorial Hall, which is on the common, the original Memorial Hall, and, again, some of the fieldstone that we used at the library.
I think the difference at the library versus here is that it would be similar in color, but in shape, we're thinking more rectilinear and square bricks instead of organically shaped rocks. So it would mimic the brick pattern that is on the rest of the building.
And why do you suggest that rather than having it all the same material, the same brick material as the rest of the building?
To announce the entrance in a different manner and to kind of relate, I think a big part of it was, like we said, relating back to the history of the town and the history of New England and stone work in New England, so.
That also plays into the, and I always name it the wrong thing, but the, I call it the powder house, but I guess it's actually the cistern that's, that sits in the back there. Would also play off of that material that's on that around it, I think, could actually draw you to coordinating it.
Another reason, too, is that, as we've mentioned, we're trying to use a different material in this back piece, and when using a different material here can tie it together a little bit more than having the brick be everything except the back portion. So it helps to tie in a color and kind of some, some lines that the rest of the building has.
Okay. Would it be the same color, the front, well, the front material would be a little dressier than the rear material?
Yes.
But would it be the same color?
Same hues. You know, stone has many different grays and browns in it, and so we think of taking a gray or a tan or a brown and using one of those colors kind of in the back.
Oh, okay. Originally, I liked the, the idea of the palladium windows, but I understand now the concerns of, of cable, and so, using the regular windows, you know, the other, the other windows is, is good. I think that's a good idea. Because you took everything into consideration, yeah.
Jim?
Thank you.
Chris?
I've actually had the pleasure of working with Julia and Drayton for probably 15-plus years. Too many years.
Hopefully, a little bit-
What I like about them is they, it's, you know, Drayton will bring forward a design, you know, being stewards of the architecture and bring forward something that he thinks is appropriate and functional and efficient and, you know, taken into account maintenance and pricing. But the process, even though a lot of these say concept, the process, you go back and forth with the building committee, probably 10 times before you got to this meeting. I'm a little hesitant to give you shots at this because I know there's, you know, this is just a small picture and it's been going back and forth. I'm comfortable with the process that you're working with the building, Permanent Building Committee, going back and forth. You know, nothing jumps out that it's egregious, or it just seems simple, and it seems like you're getting there. So the details don't really concern me because I know you guys will work that out. Bigger picture, though, is going through the schedule, Bill, that you had said, between now and Town Meeting. None of these variations in design with respect to building height or anything triggers variances or additional planning board meetings or special permits or anything, so everything's the same in that respect. So is this site plan approval from the Planning Board, right?
Yep.
So, I don't know if they have jurisdiction over the facade and all of that stuff, but-
The, the Design Review Committee has-
They do, okay.
-kind of a say on the facade and the, potentially like the cupola and stuff like that.
Okay, so they'll be taking a bite at the apple as well?
Right. And they, actually, the Site Plan Review will be looking for their recommendation before they're be willing to make their recommendation.
Gotcha, okay.
So it's a one-two punch type of thing.
And we'll be meeting with the Design Review Board tomorrow night.
Yep. Okay, great. Yeah, so I guess my comment is just keep doing what you're doing, and there's nothing here that I don't like. And I like it a lot, simple. I think early on, we heard colonial or die, one of those things, so it sounds like you, you nailed it, and I think just the, the last point is the public process, you know, and I know, Bill, you're talking about bringing it on cable. Whatever goes in the newspaper, make sure it's, you know, a good picture rather than a concept of Balkan dimension because people grab what they see in the paper, and that, you know, right or wrong, that's what they're going to keep in their mind. So, thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, I like, I like the stone on the front entranceway. It's nice. I do agree with the palladium windows. That and, and the height of that, the roofline there, it made it look like a banquet facility. So I'm a fan of that if we can shrink over the Selectmen's Meeting Room. But other than that, one question, the amount of parking spots, are we gaining or losing parking spots?
We're losing slightly. I think we're eighty-
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four?
Okay.
Eighty-four?
At this point, yep.
Okay. Is that lot typically during the day pretty full mostly?
Well, it, it varies because it gets, it gets dual use throughout the day sometimes because of the funeral home and some of the neighboring uses, but generally speaking, that, that lot is never full during the day. It, so I don't, and it'll, it'll be less of a conflict at night because there'll be less employees there during, at night, too. So, so I think, generally speaking, I think the parking should work.
Okay. And the four handicap, that's a portion of the 71.
Actually, I think that's more than what the requirement is, so.
No, I, I think it's a, it's a great design.
And you could probably get more parking spaces, but you lose the trees and the buffer to South Street, so.
Absolutely. And I think one of the issues, we're really trying to be, you know, aware of, I guess, more than anything, is that we know the, the neighbors in the front, not just the funeral home. There's a couple other businesses across on South Street that do use and park on Liberty Place at this point. That's why the, the five parking spaces were there on the left side because we want to get them out of the traffic lane. We, Drayton, Julian, and myself have met with the Fire Department already on these, on the site plan, and they brought up a, a couple of issues. They were actually pleased to see the parking to get it off the traffic lane because they were concerned about bringing in big equipment, and if they have to do it right now, it is tough. It's a tight site to get by when there's cars parked up the, the right-hand side. They also like the fact that they can get to two sides of the building, and we are working with them to potentially make it so they can get to the third side, which is between the three structures, by making that a hard-packed surface so that if they had to drive a, a piece of equipment on it, they could. And that, you know, quite honestly, they're really, you know, pleased if we can get to there. They and the DPW both are not in favor of a island that has a landscape island- They and the DPW both are not in favor of a island that has a landscape island in the middle, while it would look really nice. Obviously, DPW has issues during the wintertime with those type of islands, number one, and number two, again, the fire department's looking at it from an access point of view. They feel that would, you know, kind of constrict their front access to the building, and they would prefer to have it out of there. Planning board, on the other hand, we believe is going to ask that to be an island, so there's a little bit of a tug-of-war probably in that particular area, but I think all have good reasons why they're, you know, trying to get there. Again, from the building committee's point, you know, we like this better, because we think it's easier to maintain, and we think it's, it does serve the, the public's, you know, safety issues that need to be served, but we're sure not going to be a short showstopper for, it's what the planning board comes up with.
Bill, would it be, I, I believe between the trees, those are lights for the parking lot?
Yes.
Would they be adequate to, for that middle alleys?
Oh, yes, yeah. And they're all...
But not too bright for the...
No. No, the beauty of the, of the modern, of the newer structures and lights is that even though they can look colonial in design, you can really get them to be more focused nowadays than what the old-style lighting was, and so, you know, really, it will light up the entire parking area, but it's not going to bleed backwards onto neighbors, onto other streets. It's, it's made to do the parking area.
They're actually going to be similar to what you have downtown, in that those arms that kind of reach out onto the street, and so the arm will put the light fixture itself further into the parking lot, but it'll be of a lantern colonial-type fixture, so the light spread won't sway onto the neighbor's property or those streets rather.
I just have one more question. In the back, where there's a fence now, I, I actually looked at that, and the, the gate there, you were, you were speaking about that gate, is that gate going to be eliminated?
Well, there's no way, there's no driveway up to that gate in, in the future. The, the difference on that particular lot, when you look at the access to their backyard, is they actually have access to their backyard right off their own driveway. As you know, we ran into a similar problem on the library, but they didn't have any access to their backyard any other way than through the town property. So, I think when you, you look at the differences between the two scenarios, this, you know, what we have, you know, in our conversations with them, is they do obviously want access to their barn, they want access to be able to fix it and work around the barn itself, so we wouldn't put the fence right up against the barn. We would negotiate with them as to how we can kind of jog around, so they have the room that they need to, to, to maintain their piece of property. But, you know, again, there, there's actually a couple gates that go across that thing. All the neighbors had kind of access to walk and park their cars and walk into their property from the town side, if you will, but where there won't be, you know, parking right up against the, the fence anymore. That's pretty much eliminated at this point.
Okay, so the neighbors have no problem?
Well, I think the one with the barn, their concern was, they said they wanted to be able to access the town hall property, so they'll have that access. I'm not really sure how legal that is, but they will have access to our back property, so.
Bill, what about the two activities that kind of turned in tradition, into tradition over the years, the scout, scout selling the Christmas trees, which would be in an area now where you, it doesn't look like you could do it right in that area, and then the car washes that the kids do for all the sports?
Well, actually, I do think you could still do it, because that's why we left, you'll see, it's a stone dust front across that, the Payne School area, so that's still an open area, and we're actually asking to leave the landscaping out of, in front of that grass area, which I know we're showing some right now.
Okay.
But we want to keep that really as open a park while as, as you possibly can, so actually, they could be displayed very nicely there and, and just drive up and pick up the tree and go from there. So, I think, I think we could still accomplish similar tasks as to what's been done in the past.
Same with the car wash, too?
Car wash could be done on the side.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
What's the, as we see that building, how it is, the total square footage of the building?
Okay, number of ways to look at it. If you include the, from the exterior walls, you're probably looking at about eighteen thousand square feet of first and second floor, and there's about fifteen hundred square feet in the basement. However, the walls on this building are close to seventeen inches thick, so there is considerable square footage that's in, in a built-in wall because of steel structure, block, and so on. So, the, what, what I would call the, what the planned square footage will, will say, similar to what was done on the library and other buildings we built in the town, will show about sixteen thousand six hundred square feet on the interior of the building with fifteen hundred square feet in the basement.
But what paying for the eighteen thousand?
Well, you do and you don't. I mean, the contractors themselves aren't, they're going to be working off a plan of sixteen thousand six hundred. They are obviously looking at the thickness of the walls and the walls that they have to design and build, but there isn't a true square footage cost that you typically would have, you know, if you were just building office space, you know, square footage. So, it's not really the same costing thing. I, you know, again, I think my, my perspective on the costing side of this is, you know, the, the, the program itself, and I think your side and our side are very comfortable with what the program is, as far as how much space we have dedicated for each of the departments. Keep in mind, in, in that design, while there, looks like there's moving room within, you know, between cubicles, between offices, and stuff like that, this all has to be handicap accessible. So, we could hire a, a person who's in a wheelchair, they need to be able to get into any one of these offices, around any one of these filing cabinets, cubicles, or anything, and, and, you know, be able to move. So, the design, and I give Drayton and Julie a lot of credit, because obviously, they haven't seen, we haven't specked out a particular desk we're going to buy or a particular cube we're going to buy, but they, they, you know, used what they would consider to be pretty much industry standards and said, okay, we're going to plot those all into this whole thing, and we're going to make sure we have all those walkways around and stuff. So, the sixteen thousand six hundred really encompasses one office that we're showing as, as basically a, a potential expansion area, and one or two cubicle areas. In a building of this size, that's really not a lot of, you know, add-on space, if you will, and we think it's prudent to at least have that available to us. The, the foundation space, again, if we're going to do, and I think we've, in talking with our operations manager on my side, I think we're pretty much convinced that we're going to go probably to a four-pipe system, which means we're going to need a boiler. Boiler, we prefer to have on a basement level, not near anything else. It's the cheapest space you can build in a building. I would not want it to be on the first floor, where it's more expensive space.
Oh, and Mike, it's a Visman, right?
Yeah, well, I'm with Mike. But it would be on the lower level, and it would really give you the area, and all is going to be down there, and, and by code, the only thing that can be down there is our mechanicals. Okay, sprinkler, you know, controls the, the boiler systems, you know, some electrical stuff, but it's not going to be a storage place, it's not going to be a future office area, it's nothing else but that mechanical space, and that's why it's, it's actually as cheap as it is. I mean, you effectively are extending the foundation four feet down, and you've got some steel structure over you, so.
Bill, the air handling units, assuming they're going to be in the flat roof on the back?
What we're, no, what we're looking, when you go to a four-pipe system, you actually have a chiller unit similar to what we have at the library, at the Joint Public Safety Building, and then which, so it's a single unit, and what we were, were more than likely looking at is units that would be in the ceilings of, of each of the individual rooms that are connected by that four-pipe system. The reason we're kind of leading towards the four-pipe system is basically it gives us the ability to run air conditioning and heating at the same time. And we all know, you get in the middle of the winter, as much as, you know, you've converted a building over to heat at that point, you're in a, a conference room or even a meeting selectmen's room, where all of a sudden you have a hundred people, it starts to get warm, you have to have the ability to cool it, so this is, you know, the, the way we would kind of address doing that.
We actually are considering putting some equipment in the attic as well.
Right.
On isolation.
And these are windows that you just can't open anymore, right?
Can, but it's, you'll still open them.
Oh, you can't, you can't open the windows?
Yeah.
Fairly traditional, dull, old windows.
Are you also planning to have, like, a, some kind of a sign, like, maybe on South Street announcing that Foxborough Town Hall, so you can see it from the street level?
Interesting question. Actually, I guess I'd ask you the question. It's, when you look, when you come around and you look, first of all, it's going to say Foxborough Town Hall right on the building, in the front, so I, you, you will see that. It, it really depends, I mean, do you want that there? I mean, we, I, I don't think we care as a group. You know, obviously, we'll design it in if you want, but I think in, in a building like this, that kind of makes it look more commercial-looking than really kind of setting a, a stage. I don't, I think it's going to be pretty obvious what this building is when you're done with it, to be honest with you, but easy enough to do if, if it's something that you guys feel is necessary. Even if it's some, I mean, I, I would hope you don't want to go to something that's like an announcement sign, because I think that wouldn't look right for this building.
No, you know, a nice, you know, nice, you know, town of Foxborough Town Hall, you know?
Easily can be done. That's, that's, you know, again, that's not a big issue to us.
Yeah.
Is that Fox monument still on the site, or is that someplace else?
It's actually moved up into the, what I'll call the trio of areas, so.
Well, I mean, that was actually, and we consider it a feature of the site plan, is, you know, we're showing off the board a selectmen's room, a, a sort of a patio area, that, that meetings could spill out there in the, in the nice weather, and creating a space here between the Payne School and the cistern that, that features the history of the town. So, when you're in the meeting room, you look out, you see the Payne School, and as hard-packed as it is, we want to make it an amenity to, to the area.
My last question, is this going to be a LEED building, or could it be?
I think we will do like we've done on all the B buildings. We will actually do everything we can as far as LED lighting and, and the high-efficiency heating systems and all of that. We will continue that trend. We're not going to pay for LEED certification, it's a very expensive process. We did it on the library, and to be honest with you, with what we got for a grant versus what we paid to do it, we were net positive a little bit, but not a lot. We did reach silver, so I, I give Drayton and Julie a lot of credit for getting to that level. It was a lot of work, it's a lot of effort, but if you build the building right, you're there anyway. It's, it's just you don't have the certificate.
Most of the standards today are there anyways.
Right. There are so many standards within the code that force you to, to be very close, well, you'd get bronze, almost on any new construction, unless you were really just going on the total cheap and not worrying about anything, almost on any new construction, you'd hit bronzes, just by doing the right things.
One other comment on the, on the site plan, where you have the walkway off the corner of South Street and Liberty Street. You might want to consider doing another one at Liberty Place and South Street, because people will be walking up from the IGO, and they'll cut across the grass, and you'll have the, the wearing lane. People will make their own, their own traffic pattern, so, give them someplace to, to go.
I think, I think my new rule on that, especially around schools, is don't put any in to start with, let the kids walk, and then put your sidewalks in the year after, because you always put them in the wrong place.
Universities do that.
Right, that's what they do.
So, just something to think about.
And is this process, the way it's designed with the parking and everything, still feasible to keep them, keep the existing town hall where it is, functional?
Yeah.
Move in there, then knock it down and do the parking? That hasn't changed?
No, that's, that's the requirement and the goal here, so. And as we move through the process, we do find new things every day. I mean, we, we found out the house on the lower level there on South Street actually is tied into town sewer. Nobody knew that, so I've alerted the sewer department to make sure that they're aware of that as we move forward, that, that's taken into account. That was their only concern when we met with them, that obviously, we didn't disrupt that. So, I, I mean, again, we're, we're finding different pieces of this as we kind of move through, nothing that's obviously, you know, earth-shaking, but, you know, things to know before you get to the final stage of pulling the trigger.
I think you're doing a great job. It's very, very good, very nice to see.
It's very impressive.
And I'm, I'm happy we're staying on that, that timeline that the working group kind of, kind of set. We're hitting those milestones.
Any other comments from the board? Any other comments from the building committee? Anything on our side? Comments from the public? Dick?
Just a couple of comments, if I may. I think you've made great steps at this point after the discussion we had at the last session. You know, we're 200% ahead of where we were, and you should be commended for that.
Dick, Dick, could you come up to this microphone, so the people at home could hear it?
Now, what I wanted to indicate is that we've made progress on this, which is very positive, and they should be commended for this. There are two questions, though, that still remain. I'm not going to touch the square footage, that, that's a whole different ballgame this evening. The parking issue, though, may be an issue that the planning board will be forced to write a, a permit as opposed to just approving the, the plan. The sixty-six cars out of seventy-one is based on the, the square footage that's there under office occupancy, but the planning regulations have assembly occupancy with a different number and storage with a different number, and even with seventy-one, you'll need somewhere in the upper seventies, low eighties to meet the planning board's criteria even now. The assembly hall seating's seventy. If you take the one to three seats, you know, you, you can figure out you need twenty-four cars there alone. Storage, you need one or two, but it doesn't balance off, so you have a problem on parking, which, which could become an issue. The second one was one that Ginny brought up, and everyone has mentioned, the height of that white thing on the, the meeting room. The brick wall can be extended up as a parapet and that white coping be cut down in terms of, of emphasis. It, to us, in, in the trade, it's too heavy an element. It offsets this main entry thing with this heavy banding. You may want to shrink that down considerably to, to give you a, a better picture. The only other thing, and I don't know if it works, we, we talked about it at town meeting, Bill, Bill, I forget who else was there, about expanding the, the patio area on the right of the building by possibly flipping the building over and have the entrance abut the, the patio area with benches, and Randy can have his lunch out there now on a bench. But it, it would be a public walkway area, bench area adjacent to the school, the, the arsenal, whatever it's called, and the main entrance to the building. The main entrance, from an architect's point of view, to us seems very quick. You hit the sidewalk and you're in the building, that there isn't this comfort approach to that entry that we like, like to see, especially as you're emphasizing that, that point. If somehow it could be flipped, and I, I did some very quick things, it can be flipped, but then, then the parking be, becomes a, a bigger issue, especially if we are short. But I, I would suggest a little more work on that patio in this public area on the right, and somehow connecting it to the entrance, so people feel comfortable seeing people go in and out of the building as they're sitting there talking to the, to Bill Keegan or Beth or, or anyone else in the privacy of a patio. You know, it, it has a different kind of character and a comfort level, which I, I think we have the opportunity to do something there in that area. Whether it would work with flipping or whatever, I, I think we, we should quickly look at. I, I think it would be appropriate to get the patio, the main entrance, as this focal point to the building. Your rendering shows, shows it, but may, maybe the answer is to move that, that parking, the handicap parking over to the right and develop the patio where that handicap parking is shown in front of the building. You know, it's just this walkway to the main entrance, the highlighting of the entrance instead of having parking and a tree and almost stumbling over the, into the columns to reach the building. Those are the only comments I, I think are appropriate at this point. I think the cupola moved up. I hadn't anticipated it when I saw it the first time, I didn't like it, but I, I think it ma, makes sense. And if need be, we can still get a collection to pay for that cupola, rather than worry about the cost. But I, I think we're, we're moving on this, and, you know, just for the record, so there isn't any question about motive, I've been working with Bill and the committee in a very positive mode, because this is what town meeting voted, and I haven't been slapping except for the square footage issue, but that's another, a whole different ballgame. And I, thank you.
Thanks, Dick.
Thank you, Dick. Any other comments from the public? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
A second.
All in favor?
Thank you. Thank you very much.